Counsel Biden.
President.
President Counsel Cahill.
Absent Counsel Capano.
Present.
President Counsel Calucci.
Present.
President Counsel Pryton.
Present.
President Counsel Seh.
Present.
President Counsel Ford.
Present.
President Counsel Lozey.
Present.
President Counsel Annette.
Present.
President Counsel Phelan.
Present.
President Counsel Trahan.
Present.
Present, ten present.
Can we all please rise for a moment of silence?
My flint allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with limitation on justice for all.
We need a motion to accept the meeting minutes of November thirteenth at twenty seven.
May it seconded in discussion. All those in favor opposed or carries.
Communications, we have the introduction of the new animal control officer Keith Shepherd.
Mr. Shepherd, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium. This is Mr. Keith Shepherd, I think everyone has heard the name, our new animal control officer who we requested to be here this evening. Thank you very much for coming, congratulations on the new position. If you'd like to say a few words to the counsel, the floor is yours.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Keith Shepherd. I started this position about two weeks ago and I can tell you this is definitely the greatest time in my life. To no surprise, it's been very busy. I had been warned when I took this position that it was going to be probably the busiest animal control position in Lynnland and I would have to say it's probably in the top three. I really enjoyed it nevertheless and my particular apartment is a part of an apartment and they've been extremely lucrative in all the equipment and tools I need to perform this job. My two trainers, Mike Karavich and Kevin Farnsworth have been tremendous in helping with my training with the city and certain laws and equipment tools, things like that. And I can tell you today it was probably the busiest day I've had in two weeks and we took in six animals today, eighteen phone calls and it was a time of life today and then with a little flecking white dog at the very end of the day. But so I enjoy this very much and trying not to hand my personal cellphone number out to everybody. But don't hesitate to call if you're not getting the service as quick as you like.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Shepherd? Counsel Lozey.
Mr. President, I shall have the pleasure of speaking with Officer Shepherd and he's a well-spoken, pleasant, all-around individual and I think he'll go a long way in being Lynn's dog officer, which involves an awful lot of being like a social worker as well as multitasking as a dog officer and multiple tasks. So I appreciate you coming into Lynn and having the great attitude that you have, Mr. Shepherd.
Counsel Ford.
Mr. Shepherd, in the past we've had issues on weekends. How does that deal with your available weekends on weekends on Sundays?
As of right now, Mike Karavich, the full-time animal patrol officer for Nahann as well the part-time animal patrol officer for Lynn, he's available after hours on Monday and Friday and 24 hours a day on the weekends. I am also available, if he is not, for the next four weeks until I move into the city. I will be moving into the city in about four or five weeks from now, in which case I'll be completely available 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Counsel Lauchy.
The biggest question, are you eligible? Absolutely. Good answer.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. I have the good fortune of speaking with you earlier this evening and I too was impressed with meeting you and I'm very impressed that you're buying in the city of Lynn. You're clearly an improvement to our city and we'd love to have more people like you moving in. So thank you and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Attorney.
Communication from Frederick Cronin, collector tax, is David Council's important procedures established by the Massachusetts Ethics Commission. I hereby notify you that I intend to reappoint my brother Ralph W. Cronin to the position of Deputy Tax Collector for the year 2013. Pursuant to the Ethics Commission requirements, I would be grateful if you would approve this appointment and notify me in writing that my brother's financial interest in his position is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the city may expect from me should I make this appointment. Very truly yours, Frederick Cronin. Motion approved, seconded.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. And we have... Okay, I have several counsel appointments/reappointments. I can read them all together and if you want to separate them, you can. Fausto Cabrera, reappointment to the Pine Grove Cemetery Commission expires 9/11/2013. Theresa Sheehan, reappointment to the Pine Grove Cemetery Commission expires 9/11/2013. Manny Alcantara to replace Jay Think on the Pine Grove Cemetery Commission. Manny Alcantara to replace Jay Think on the Traffic Commission. And Christopher Rowe, appointed to the Traffic Commission to replace Steven Spencer, appointed until October 24, 2014.
If there's no objection, we can take all five collectively unless anybody would like to take one individually. What's the motion to counsel?
Motion.
Approved, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes.
Public hearings.
First, public hearings to make a determination on the percentage of the fiscal 2013 tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property.
I'd like to open the public hearing on the FY 2013 tax levy. Anybody wishing to speak? Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing no one wishing to speak, close the public hearing on the FY 2013 tax levy. Open the discussion for the councils on the floor.
Minimum residence...
Second. I'll take that in the form of a motion for the motion made to set the minimum residential tax back, which has been seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Second, public hearings on the abandonment of a portion of Blossom and Alley Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Mr. President, it's through you to the members of the council. I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. I represent American Biproducts, owners of the land at 77 Alley Street, which is at the corner of Blossom and Alley. Members of the council may recall, I was here earlier this year to get a special permit for the use of that property by American Biproducts. American Biproducts has been in business in Lynn for over 20 years, had a fire that was catastrophic, destroyed their main building. The principals wanted to stay in the city of Lynn and keep the jobs here. They searched diligently and this past year found this building at 77 Alley Street. After the council consent, the building was acquired. During the process of acquiring the building, the building was surveyed, a type of examination was done. What was discovered, notwithstanding what appears to the eye to be the land of American Biproducts that runs along Blossom Street from the railroad bridge to the intersection of Alley Street, in fact, that land is the city's land. And the reason for that appears that in 1970, they were wrapping up urban renewal. Somebody rightly made a judgment, at least at that time, that if they put the sidewalk on this piece of land, it would lead to the railroad bridge into the railroad bridge. So they put the sidewalk a couple of feet over. And when they did that, the sidewalk proceeds underneath the railroad bridge, but it left, what in the conveyancing world we call a gap or a gorge, there's 1,700 square feet. It's owned by the city of Lynn. American Biproducts is interested in acquiring that from the city of Lynn so that they could enlarge their building, put their offices there. Right now, they're operating in two or three different locations in the city and have been since the fire. They want to consolidate in one location. If this portion of land that is untaxed, is unused, is now abandoned by the city, it would be developed by American Biproducts, obviously put it back on the tax walls and have both utility in that it would create and allow the office to be where the main headquarters of the operation is and it would derive and provide the city additional tax revenue. As I say, since 1970, when urban renewal wound up, the land is sat there and has not been used by anyone, has not generated any taxes. And as I say, if you look at it, it looks like it belongs to 77 Alley, but in reality it belongs to the city. And so I'm here in support of the request for abandonment. I'd be glad to hear any questions.
If there are any questions, Attorney Vitale, we can ask them after the public hearing. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing, Counsel Capano.
Yes, I'd like to speak in favor of this. We actually put stipulations that the building be landscaped, you know, when we did the approval and until we did the title search, we had no idea, as Attorney Vitale said, that that wasn't part of the land, you know, it was actually city land. And when they were in renewal, that's what they had to do, otherwise the sidewalk, like he said, would have went right into the track. So it'd be really unreasonable not to move forward with this petition because they'd be able to make improvements to that part of the property and then also landscape, whatever. If you can picture the building, if you've been there before, there's been like abandoned vehicles on that part of the property at times and it's generally unkept over the years. So this would allow the property owner to keep that up to make it look, you know, pretty good, you know, as compared to what it looks right now. So I'd like to speak in favor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I believe we have a letter in support from the...
We do have a letter that they've recommended the approval of the abandonment of the portion of Blossom and Alley Street.
So we'll take that as part of the record. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes.
Next, public hearing.
Public hearing relative to a burnt, dilapidated, dangerous building or other structure or make impossible land located at 122-126 Mariana Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor. Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing, Counsel Seh.
Thank you, Mr. President. This property has been nothing but a problem since I've been a councilor, I know previous councilors, O'Brien and Bobbinger have also had issues and problems, so it's probably things back over, you know, 20-year period. And it's a huge, six-family building where there are... It's rented out to a lot of immigrant families who come here to this country, but it's a very unsafe, dilapidated piece of property. And I personally feel that the owners of this property should be held criminally... Criminal. They're criminals and they should be held liable, to be honest with you. I know there's a warrant out for the arrest of the woman who owns the building. She didn't show up for court, no complaints have been lodged against her in the last few months. And it still does no good to the neighborhood, it hasn't contributed anything to the community, it's a light, you know, requesting that the council approve demolition of this property.
Motion made, seconded in discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes.
Next, public hearing.
Petition of Perez Services and Repair, Eduardo Perez, for permission for auto repair garage at 61 Commercial Street, with hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Like to open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Again, Counsel Capano. Motion to table. Motion made, table, non-debatable. Roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Next petition, petition of City Enterprise Incorporated, Anthony Rincusia, for permission for a laundromat at 597 Essex Street, seven days, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. And they have presented a letter requesting withdrawal of the petition.
Do you need to be on withdrawal on the record, please?
I think Rincusia from 597 Essex Street would like to withdraw from the agenda for a petition to allow a laundromat at said location.
Motion except for the files.
Yes.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Public hearing, so to set down.
We have three to set down. Petition of Tony Tipico, Azvaldo Celisero. Petition for permission for a food establishment, feed-in and take-out with approximately 20 seats from 9:00 to 11:00 Monday through Sunday, 268-272 Essex Street. Petition of National Grid, Jason Dwyer, for permission to install two 2-inch PVC conduit approximately 60 from pole 17 to 149 Mariana Street for new underground service for a house located at 149 Mariana Street. Petition of Takira Mexico Lindo Manuel Cervantes for permission for a restaurant with beer and wine at 16 Market Street.
Motion to set all down, second. Motion made, seconded, to set all down for public hearing collectively. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Committee reports. Renewable Energy Committee report lays over to December 18th, License Committee.
Motion accept the report. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Finance Committee, we have several that they request emergencies. Do you want me to read them together and separate them if you'd like?
Yes, if anybody would like to take any individually again, please let me know. If not, move on collectively.
Order that the city control of the initiative by authorized to take the following action: certifies and available fund the amount of $96,517.0 as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Institute of Museum and Library Services to fund a grant initiative for the 2013 Learning Labs and Libraries and Museums grant. Grant period is 1/13 to 6/30/14. Second, certify and available fund the amount of $226,028.0 as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative from the inclusive preschool classroom grant. Grant period is 7/12 to 6/30/13. Certifies and available fund the amount of $105,243.0 as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative for the Early Childhood Special Education Allocation Grant. Grant period is 9/12 to 8/31/13. Certifies and available fund the amount of $54,200.0 as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative for the Literacy Partnership Grant. Grant period is 10/4/12 to 6/30/13. Certifies and available fund the amount of $5,950,432.0 as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative for the Title I grant. Grant period is 7/12 to 6/30/13. Certifies and available fund the amount of $3,599,775.0 as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Department of Education to fund a grant initiative from Sped 94 Allocation Fund Round 2. Grant period is 9/12 to 8/30/13. In order that the city control of the initiative by authorized to make the following transfer from the account of solicitors' legal expense to the account of solicitors' prior year bills: $1,540 from the account of reserve fund to the DPW OT account, DPW Highway expense: And additionally, order that the... Order that the city control of the initiative by authorized to transfer front free cash to sum of $4,700,00.0 to reduce the fiscal year 2013 tax levy. Requesting emergency, have all of those...
What's the wish of the counsel?
Motion to approve. We have the other committee.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes.
Making the emergency, please. Roll call.
Counsel Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Pryton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes.
I believe that we requested at the last couple of council meetings to have representatives from both National Grid and Corvial Electric. I believe they are here this evening. If we could invite them to the podium, please? If each of you could just introduce yourself and then I'll open the floor to the council's questions.
Robert Dogg. Thank you all.
And Cameron from National Grid.
Councills, any questions? Counsel Capano.
I have a couple questions. I have... The reason I'm very interested in coming up with a melon for this meeting is not so much of all finding, you know, questions about that finding, to find out, you know, what you can do to approve the situation with streetlights being up, especially like on Windway. There's a number of streetlights out, they've been out for a long time, called them in, DCI, called them in through the city. We have poles that are down, there's a pole down in front of McDonald's that's been down for two, three months. There's another one down in front of Windway Motor Sales, one right around the corner at Traditional Bread's, another one on the corner of Alley, Blossom, and one block, like four poles down. The one on Windway, the business owner there's been calling for months, trying to get an idea of when that may be replaced and he really isn't getting any and neither am I. So I would just like, you know, a response on, you know, when that can be done, you know, why it takes so long, you know, what are the problems that are encountered? And as far as the lights on Windway, you know, most of the lights at the GE Bridge are out. I don't know if anybody knows that, does anybody check? It's not like there are residential areas I know that people are expecting to call that the streetlight is out, but there are a lot of areas where there's no residents there. So whose responsibility is that to check? If you drive from GE Bridge, actually if you drive all the way from Revere, that old Windshore Road all the way down to Broad Street, there's a number of streetlights out and I don't know if anybody's looking at that or what, do they all have to be out? And, you know, so I just would like you to elaborate a little bit on that and I guess maybe we can have a little back and forth and hear from some of the other councils. I just find it a big problem, you know.
All I'll speak to, as we know, the... A lot of the cities, the streetlights in the city of Lynn are now owned by the city, but specifically on DCI roadways, the responsibility is shared in most cases, everything below the ground in terms of the civil part of the streetlight, which is the conduit in the ground, the actual concrete base, that is a responsibility of the DCI. The pole, the light itself, the maintenance of the light and the wiring is all the responsibility of National Grid. So when a pole does get hit, quite often the base gets destroyed as well. So we could be waiting for the DCI to actually fix the base and then we'll come in and put the light back. But I think for our discussion yesterday, I think the best thing right now is for us to do a complete patrol, patrol rather, of the entire DCI roadways in the city, determine what poles are down, what responsibility, who's, you know, who's at bat here and we'll go ahead and get these things fixed.
Counsel Capano.
And that's great. I hope that happens. Like, how do we know, like, when this will happen? Like, next week? Would we get a... Would I get a phone call or somebody get a phone call here or in two weeks? I mean, when would it be unreasonable to expect an answer about when the work would be done? And I mean, we have... I mean, we have, it's been a long time already and I know we did speak to everybody to appreciate, you know, the answer that you gave, but we still do not know, like, what the next steps would be.
Well, yeah, the next would be to do the patrol. We could certainly do that in the next couple of weeks. Obviously, we have the holidays coming up and then things that we can get to right away, like if the base is fine, that's something totally in our control, we'll get that scheduled, get these poles back up. I think a reasonable time for that, we'll get the patrol done in the next couple of weeks to know where we're at. And, you know, follow, immediately following that, we'll get, start putting the poles back up where we can. So I can certainly update the city. Normally, we deal with Dottie and the wiremen and we can update her on progress or I can go to Terry and update, you know, however you want me to communicate, we can do that.
Yes, I would like communication to all, if you could, you know, to Dottie and, and to Terry. And, and just out of curiosity, because you had no idea that the pole, those poles were down until you spoke yesterday.
Well, I didn't know the number of poles. I mean, at any given time, you know, we're in transition here in terms of poles being backed down and whose responsibility it is, but that number was surprising, no other minute. But, you know, we do have to work these things out with the DCR. The DCR has contractors and do this work for them. And, you know, what we do is we send the information over to them following the accident or whatever happened. And if it is determined that the base needs to be fixed, we do need to wait for them to get back to us. But perhaps we could probably do a better job communicating that as well. But I think the best thing is to, I wanted to hear quoting here, I think we should get working on trying to get as many as we can get fixed that are in our responsibility and also press upon the DCR, especially being vulnerable for the council, you know, they need to fix their bases as well.
I mean, ideally, wouldn't it be the right thing to do to, when you do a patrol, it'll take a week or no longer, two weeks, that you would, you would decide what the course of action would be, whose responsibility it was, and then the business or, you know, case of business and some instances it could be a residence, they would get a letter, you know, to let them know, you know, especially when they've been calling for months, you know, to inform them that, you know, we're aware of the situation and we're going to take care of it, you know. I would stumble with communication breaks down. I don't know if this is a council, see this is a problem. Maybe it's just in my area. It's very frustrating when you, when you can't get answers, you know, in a timely manner and it's like no place to go. I mean, this particular owner here uses the pole for floodlights to, he has used car business for his business and he needs that pole for the light and he gets it built from National Grid when he's been trying to get the pole up for months. And around the corner, you know, because there's no lighting there, because there's two poles down in that area there, I got a call from a business right around the corner that, you know, his employee is mugged, went home to another client. And it's just these things just add up and it still really don't have any answers for anybody. So I can see my frustration, you know, and, you know, it's really a problem and, you know, and if we can't straighten, you know, we're going to have to take more punitive measures, I think. I hate to say that, but I mean, I really feel like it's a really big problem. There's, there should be more of a sense of urgency to take care of this. And that's why we're here and hopefully, you know, we'll be, you know, having this meeting here. I know we've done this before, that this will help take care of this.
Thank you, council. Council Craig.
President, for you two members, I'd like to echo the sentiments of Council Capano. I think it comes down to communication. This past summer, I had an issue with my ward, I won't get into the specifics of it, but essentially the work hours that it was supposed to be conducted by National Grid that exceeded residents were being woken up in the middle of the night for some roadwork that was being done. And I reached out, was able to actually get someone on the phone and have a conversation and say, you know, this can't happen again, this is a residential area, people need to wake up early. And I was essentially told, you know, too bad we have the work scheduled. Again, I don't want to be woefully punitive, but my initial reaction is if you're going past the allotted hours of construction and you're telling the ward councilor that all the issues concerning his constituents aren't really relevant, I think something needs to be done. So whether it's a group communication, maybe that was an isolated incident, but it seems that there are other issues in other wards. We need to protect our constituents and our businesses. So moving forward, I think rather than having, you know, to come up with a new ordinance to have harsher penalties, if, if the contract and special permit isn't followed, we would like to see some better effort from your end. Not you specifically, but from the council.
Thank you, council. Any additional comments or questions? We appreciate you coming this evening. Thank you. Council Capano.
For Corvial Electric. Oftentimes, I hear in certain parts of Westwood, you know, my areas, that there are underground wiring problems. Most of the area, I think we respond well, you know, but there's underground issues that may concern National Grid, you know, maybe around like Neptune Boulevard, that area, there's old infrastructure that needs updating and, you know, the results are that, you know, the lighting is inconsistent or doesn't work at all. I didn't know if you could elaborate a little about that.
Particularly where it's council, we have listeners knowing, the lights are out. We go, anything on the pole, the light itself, the city's, and that's probably what we're taking. Once it's in service location, whether it's overhead or secondary or underground, National Grid, we saw, we turned a lot to those, they're getting to us. Give those locations to National Grid, provide an idea of the power issue there. That's, you know, it's the last week or so. So we, you know, get back on this pole, we put it, there's still power there. There are certain ones that have been on this for a long time.
Is there a way, like, if you go, if you run into a situation like that where it happens to be the responsibility of National Grid and not the city's responsibility, that you could somehow communicate that so we know that? Maybe we could do that through, so you tell Dottie and then we could know that way. Now, I'm just trying to speed up and identify and focus on which areas in particular we're talking about.
We could turn the pile list and send it to Dottie, which we may say, so that these are longer than on there for a long time, just so she has the information.
Could you do that?
Thanks, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Again, thank you for coming. Council Seer.
Thank you. Is Verizon and Comcast?
We've invited both. Would you like to speak? I think they both have representatives there.
Uh, yeah. Sure.
Which one of both?
Both.
Representatives from Verizon and Comcast online coming forward. If you could please identify yourselves when you get to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Miley. I'm here. My name is Stan Usevich. I'm with Verizon, offices at 63 High Street in Davis. Also with me is Kathy Green, Area Foreman. Kathy is a resident of Lynn and is totally familiar with the issues of Verizon in the city.
Thank you. And if my memory is right, you are the former mayor of Salem.
That's correct.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for-
Council Seer.
Thank you. I know Kathy had worked with us in the past, chairs have been on to her in the past. The problem issue that I have is down in the Nye District area. There are a lot of poles down there and wires that Comcast and Verizon have put up in the last 10 or 15 years, bringing cable into the area and I understand that, but the wires are hanging so low, they just look terrible in that area. There's also a few poles down on Wilkott that, telephone poles, that I know, you know, sometimes you have to wait for people to transfer things, but I mean, it's been months since those poles, Ocean Street, in that area. But the big concern is when you look at the wires and the telephone wires, I know electric wires usually hang a lot higher up across the pole. These wires are hanging low enough that if a truck pulls into a driveway, they're going to knock them down. And I mean, they're not just, it's not just a wire. These are-
Cables.
Big cables that have low wires going through them and they have to be tightened up. They look like crap, to be honest with you. Verizon and Comcast could get down there and not just take a look at it and say, yeah, we'll get to it. I mean, it's been an issue for about a year now, so whatever they can do. As the wire comes along, as, you know, a bad vehicle peeks down there, the residents would like to see those wires tightened up.
Through you, Mr. President. Thank you. Clearly, if there is an issue with low wires, I will leave my contact information to the clerk. I urge any member of the council to contact me on low wires. I'll get them into dispatch. In terms of double poles, we do work very cooperatively with the city. As a matter of fact, Kathy enters any of the changes that you might have made in fire alarm or in streetlights or any of the patches you may have in poles. Kathy does that for the city, so there's a clear understanding of where everybody's at. In the past year, for instance, I think we've, yeah, did reduce the number of double poles by 154 in the city. It is a shared responsibility to get that, as you pointed out at the top.
Right.
And works its way down. Verizon, unfortunately, it's always the last, last one to pull, so you do bear that burden. But I will leave my contact information. If there is any issue involved, please be free to give me a call. Kathy's also made something available through DPW release. I think, who I am, so even knows how to get in touch with her. So, you know, we can try to help as best we can.
Well, when you, it's not just one street and area, it's all streets in between Ocean Street and Winchell Road around, you know.
And those are wires.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, when you look at them, it's not a safety issue that you gotta, you gotta look at it and say, oh, they're not that high. When you look at them, totally, they look, they don't look, especially for the people. I mean, you look to all the other side of streets, I mean, the streets, the wires are tight, they're all high enough, they look okay, but these just don't.
Counselor, if you could just send me an email with those streets that you're most concerned with and I'll get them on dispatch.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the council? Council Ford.
Just for the information of Kathy, you have done a great job against the problem councils, but in our ward, we removed 50 maybe double poles, maybe more. Through the years, we've had a good working relationship, so I'm sure the council will reach out to her, she'll be active with you. Thank you.
I just want to add, she had, Kathy has been her responsibility in the past, but this is not just one pole, it's a whole type of cable of poles and wires that they need to address.
Thank you. Now, I do believe we also have somebody from Comcast here. Does anybody want to speak to the Comcast representative?
It's the same issue. It's a both on the same pole.
Thank you. My name is Jay Lyman. I'm with Comcast. I have taken some notes regarding quotes low hanging wires. I think you said between Ocean and Winchell.
And it's all side streets in there. It's side streets.